Good morning. I'd like to call the Planning Commission order and ask you to rise and pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, God invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we call a roll, please?
Commissioner Bill Bartels?
Here.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Nora Idukas?
Good morning.
Commissioner Leo Molitor?
Here.
Come now to a time for public comments. This is a time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. I have no speaker cards. Moving on, approval of the February 7th and February 14th minutes. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
A motion? Is there a second?
I'll second. I have a comment on both, actually, but I'll second.
Okay.
On the minutes for the 7th, Danielle, I noticed the type of, on page two, or actually page four of the document, about midway down, the paragraph starts with "due to the timing", on the third line there, it says "will not be", "not be", it's kind of a redundancy there, two-word redundancy, "deleeve not be".
Any other corrections?
I have a question on page five, under Commission Action, the second paragraph. Commissioner Idukas moved to approve the recommended action and to recommend that the Board of Supervisors increase the minimum 20 percent criteria to establish bona fide conversion. Commissioner Rodriguez seconded the motion, motion carried. Now, my question is, does that, should that recommended action be put down below under recommended actions?
I'm sorry, where are you?
Oh, I'm on page five.
Okay, got it.
Under Commission Action, second paragraph, beginning with Commissioner Idukas. And if we voted to recommend this action, should it not be put then under recommended actions? The next section down. That's just a question. I don't know.
Didn't the Board already go through this and do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they've already acted on the matter.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was noticing that County Council wasn't here yet, so I was trying to get Robert on the phone. I wasn't listening to the discussion.
My question was, on page five, under Commission Action, the second paragraph where we asked to also recommend to increase the 20 percent criteria. My question is, should that then, I mean, in the future, it's too late, but this, should that then be placed under recommended actions instead of Commission Action? Is that really one of our recommendations? Because...
Well, you're saying along with, excuse me, you're saying along with the recommend staff, staff actions, the Commission also make a recommendation?
Yes, and that, should that be also under recommended actions? That was just a question.
Well, but the way I read this, the Commission Action was additional to the staff recommended action, so in fact, there are two statements. One is the Commission Action, which was to support the staff recommendations with a caveat, so they're become, it is a separate action from the staff recommended action.
That's a good point, and I think it's well taken, and I agree.
Because it looks like there was, I'm abstaining from these minutes, but as I read the minutes, it was clear, there was a motion, a second, some dialogue. The motion was withdrawn. There was a second motion to clarify, and that passed.
Right. Okay, I see the point. So we have Commission Actions on the agenda and Staff Actions, and we don't want to put a Commission Action down under Staff Action.
Right, especially if we're making an adjustment.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. I'm satisfied.
Any other discussion?
None on this particular set of minutes.
On the other set?
On the other set of minutes, for 14th, I have to abstain, and then I wasn't here.
Should we approve this set first?
Yeah, actually, could we have two motions? Because I have to abstain from the February 7th, and Richard has to abstain from...
Move approval of minutes for December 13th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then for February 7th? Go back. We have February 14th, and we have February 7th. So we had a motion on the table for February 7th with a second. Let's take that motion. All those in favor of the minutes of February 7th?
Aye. Aye.
Abstain. And then, an additional motion for February 14th?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Idukas for February 14th, seconded by Commissioner Molitor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
All right, moving on. Move now to item six, ZN070005, Watershed Protection District. Case Planner, Ms. Christina? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you all hear me?
Barely.
If you put them together and talk into them both, it helps.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Speak to us as if they are not there.
All right. Good morning. Chair Bartels, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Christina Rizari with the RMA Hunting Division, and I'm here to talk to you today about the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment initiated by the Watershed Protection District. Specifically, the text amendment will eliminate the zone clearance requirement for the non-coastal zoning ordinance for projects that are done by the Watershed Protection District in their maintenance projects. Specifically, the sections of the ordinance that will be affected are Sections 8102, which are the definitions, and that's of the maintenance projects for watershed protection, and Section 8105-4, which is the definitions, oh, excuse me, which is the zoning matrix, and that shows the exemption. And these two items are in your staff report for Exhibit 2. The project has been deemed categorically exempt for Class 1 existing facilities, and when the final decision of this project is determined, the notice of exemption will be filed. Now, I would like to have Mr. Tom Legere from the Watershed Protection District address the Commission on the specifics of the project, and when he is done, I will return and deliver the staff recommendations. That's all.
Thank you, Christina, Chair Bartels, and members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Tom Legere. I'm the manager of the Operation and Maintenance Division of the Watershed Protection District, and I am here to summarize for you some of the background information that led to this request and why it is important to us. If I can get this working right. Ah, yes, okay. In July of 2007, we met with the Planning Division and requested a change in the ordinance in order to allow us to stockpile material in our, from some of our basins. We removed sediments and debris from our debris basins and some of our channels. And the reason that we would like to stockpile material from some of these basins is that it's good quality material, and it will, we can then market it and reduce our operating costs. This is really the sole driving force for us moving forward in this direction. Because of the challenging times that we are in, we are seeking ways to help offset some of the costs that we incur in our operations. The district cleans out channels and debris basins as a part of its mandate for protection of public health and safety of the residents of Ventura County. We are a subdivision of county government, and we operate under, not the general fund, but we operate with special districts' monies, and those two are challenged by the economics of the times that we are in. Historically, when we remove, we have over 40 basins that we maintain, and I'm going to share with you one example of a current project. But typically, in the past, we would contract with a local licensed contractor for debris removal from our basins, and in most cases, we would have them remove it and dispose of it. That would be the requirement of the contract. For this service, we typically paid between $10 and $20 a yard for the material removed. Sometimes we paid more. And sometimes the material was suitable enough that the contractor could market it to an end user and thereby enhance his profit margin. This picture that's shown is a photo of the, one of our debris removal operations from Lower Kiigus Creek. The example I'm going to share was in 2006, we contracted for removal of approximately 600,000 yards of sediment from Lower Kiigus Creek. Rather than having the contractor move the material off-site and dispose of it, we required that he place it into stockpile. And we had a stockpile that was adjacent to, adjacent to our channel, that we placed the material, so it wasn't required that they take the material out on the highways and truck it. The ability for us to be able to do that greatly reduced the cost for the removal of that material. On that project in particular, we had an overall cost for the removal and stockpiling the material of about $6 a cubic yard, which is considerably less than we would normally pay just for removal and disposal. We entered into an agreement with a local landowner who had the property adjacent to the creek, and we leased a portion of property from him, and then placed the stockpile on that property, and negotiated a terms of participation wherein they share in the proceeds of the sale of this when it is marketed. Subsequently, we entered into an agreement with a local developer to buy the material out of stockpile for $4 a cubic yard. And I have here a picture of that stockpile. This is it right here. It's in two sections, it's kind of a roadway that goes up between the two sections, but 600,000 yards of material, and it's placed alongside the creek. This photo doesn't really show the creek, it shows a pond, but it's, the creek is just beyond on the other side of the pile. And it also shows the farming operation where we have this material stockpiled, which is a sod, a sod operation. And here is a picture of the north half of that stockpile and the adjacent operation, and you can see in behind the Kiigus Creek. The net result of this, what we're doing here, is that when the material is sold, the county will receive approximately $1.2 million, which will offset approximately one-third of the cost of the original $3.8 million dollar cost of the project. So that's the motivation for us to do this. In order to comply with SEQA requirements and to implement appropriate best management practices in this, in the storage of this material, we implemented primarily three best management practices that were real important to this. One is, we track-packed the entire stockpile to compact the surface and also to create the divots that you see there from the tracks that will contain the runoff rather than letting it real erosion down the slope. So that was the first thing we did. Next, we hydro-seated the entire area to establish some root mass in the surface, which would further reduce the potential for erosion. And lastly, we constructed a, whoops, we constructed a silt fence along the toe of the pile to contain any erosion, either wind or surface erosion that came off. Basically, the, what we're proposing is, we believe, and we have out there, we've not done this a lot, this is probably the largest project that we have undertaken of this magnitude, but we have been very careful in how we've handled the material and how we protect the area. We think we are a good neighbor out there with that stockpile, and we think it fits well into the surrounding neighborhood, so to speak. And we believe that we have in this material there, an asset that will be a strong help to us in helping to retain or reduce our costs of operation as we fulfill our mandate for public health and safety. That's my presentation. Thank you.
I don't know who came up with this idea, but I think it's great that you're able to cut costs by doing this. A couple of questions. First of all, do you anticipate that all of the stockpile is going to eventually be taken away?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then that answers my second question, is that how big would it eventually get before you had to move somewhere else?
Well, we have, this, as you see it there today on the north end, if I can get this target to work in that area, it's about 25 feet high. That's all that site will hold. And so, we will maintain it there. We had, I mentioned the sale of the material to a local developer, we had the agreement with that developer, it's an Oxnard project, and when the residential market went in the tank, so did the project temporarily. So, they were supposed to move the material off of there by now, but have not. We are also, at the present time, negotiating with a highway project, I believe, this is through our real estate division, negotiating with a highway project in the Camarillo area to take approximately 200,000 yards of that material. We have another group that's coming in Friday to look at the site and the material. They have interest in trucking it to Oxnard, putting it on a barge, and taking it down the coast, and doing some beach replenishment because there's been some severe erosion in some of the beach areas down south of Point Magoo, down to Point Doom. And so, the areas, they are considering that possibility. So there are, there is a market. This is good quality material, and there is a market for it, and we have several. We have over 40 basins that we maintain. Some of those, as we trap sediments, some of those are produced, I would say produced, they trap good quality material. Some of them produce or trap very poor quality material. And on that good quality material, we hope that we will be able to, either working with the local adjacent landowners to come up with this kind of a partnership arrangement, or to buy a site nearby our facilities to put some of this better material into storage so that we can sell it and help offset the cost of our operations.
Is this, is the good quality sediment good enough to spread on top of soil?
Yes.
To use for agriculture, maybe to fill in where there had been erosion?
Right, that's true.
Is that good?
It's, yeah. Well, basically, it depends on the area. Now, what has come down here has come out of those sand mountains behind, you know, up in the upper watershed, and as it is deposited down along the way, it gets stratified a little bit. When it hits this area, which is down by Wayneeny Road and south to Highway 1, it gets very flat, the channel gets very flat, so we settle out a lot of material. Of the finer grade material, fine sands is how I would classify it, and the smaller fractions like silt, there's really not much clay in any of this material around here, but the smaller clay fraction sized material gets flushed on through into Magoo Lagoon. But this, so this is good quality material.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
I'm wondering if you received any input or complaints from anyone who's neighboring, you know, a farmer that might be concerned about dust, or...
Actually, we've had, I'd say we've had two levels of inquiry on this. One is, on the other side of the creek, there is, has been raised a question about the size of this pile, and it's on a kind of a curve in the creek, and wondering whether or not it might block spillage of the water over the levee, so to speak, and force it to go out over the other side to the other neighbor. We don't believe that that's a credible problem, so we haven't, it's not really been raised. It was just a question that came to me, actually, third-hand. The other source of inquiry we've had is from landowners on the other side who have land that they would like to use also, or have us use in the future as potential sites. So we've not had any negative as far as sand blow and that sort of thing. This material is quite stable, and those operations, those farming operations out there, as you know, when sometimes the wind blows very hard, can generate quite a bit of dust. And I was out there one day when we were about probably 25, 30 mile an hour winds in that area, and I didn't see any material coming off the pile, but as the farm equipment moved through the fields, it did generate quite a bit of dust. So I don't believe that we are contributor to dust down there because of the fact that we've stabilized through the track packing and the hydroseeding that we've done.
Okay, thank you very much.
The sediment material that's obviously good enough to recycle, if you will, or sell, goes into various construction sites primarily, I would assume. What was done with the material that wasn't to that grade to be able to put back into use? How was that disposed of previously? And I realize you contracted to have it hauled.
Yes, we have, they've gone into, in many cases, they've gone into other farming operations where they have, in some cases, material went to nurseries for blend to make it, for box plants and that sort of thing. In some cases, it's such poor quality material, and we have a basin that's up on the Ventura River, up around the corner here by, in the area of the Shell area, and the Stanley exit in there. We have a dent debris basin, and it's really ugly stuff. We just have to haul it off and dispose of it through commercial landfill. And truckers don't want to haul it because it's so sticky, it's almost like a clay, and it gets stuck to their trucks and they have to wash them. So there's, we have a range of material that we encounter, but most of it, for the most part, stuff that's coming down this drainage is pretty good material.
So the intent, sounds like the intent would be to replicate this first collection mound in other patch-based areas as they become available?
As we are able. This is certainly the largest site that we operate in. We have, as I mentioned, 600,000 yards of material that, we get deposition in the channel of about 100,000 yards per year that comes into this channel. So that means about every five years, we are going to be in here doing this again, and have done it in the past. I mean, there's been, I think, I don't recall the number, but it's been a large number of material that's been removed out over the past 30 years.
Is the intent to, now that it's down and compacted and hydroseated, is the intent to continue with that practice of pack tracking and hydroseeding as it's removed and is disturbed?
Well...
Keep the dust down, or is that just a one-time thing to...
No, we would certainly, hopefully, when it comes, when the material comes out, we remove large blocks of it. We don't, just want to pick a little here and a little there. We'll work off of one area.
And you mentioned 200,000.
We don't get it rid of it all during one season, we probably, in here, the script is being written on that, but certainly, we would stabilize the areas that we have disturbed because we realize that we're under some scrutiny, and we want to be a good neighbor. We want it to be a success for us and for the image of the district and for the local neighbor. I mean, the farmer there is actually exercising quite a bit of faith in us to do what's responsible there because he's got very high-end crop usage going on there that if we let it go to weeds and we don't control it, or we let it blow away and ends up on him, it's bad for him and ultimately bad for us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So based on the presentation you just heard, and the staff report and the exhibits, staff recommends the following actions be taken: find that the project is categorically exempt under Section 15301, Class 1 of the SEQA guidelines, and find, based on the evidence presented in Section 3 and 4 of the staff report, and the information presented at the hearing, that the non-coastal zoning ordinance text amendment standards have been met, and adopt a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve the subject amendment and to the non-coastal zoning ordinance. If you have any questions, that concludes my portion of the presentation.
Richard, any questions?
No.
Just one. And it may, it seems like we flirt when we deal with gravel material or harvested material. Are we ever going to bump up against SMRA here, the Surface Mining Reclamation Act?
Yeah, this project is exempt from SMRA, clearly, and we have checked with the state and talked with them. The Director of the Office of Mine Reclamation, it's an exempt project for channel cleanout. Channel cleanouts are exempt under the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act.
I understand, but at some point, if, this is not an ice, this is countywide, so let's say we have the perfect storm where we have a very heavy rain year and major deposits, and, Tom, emergency work and all that kind of stuff, and we end up in an economy that remains not building things. So we have stockpiles throughout the county. Is there any, is there any way that anybody has sort of foreseen where by a simple text amendment, we are opening ourselves to some regulatory process outside of the county that will then trump this whole thing?
This text amendment really is only for the planning department to no longer issue a zoning clearance. So it's not like it was coming back to the planning department and having a full discretionary review. It was an over-the-counter zoning clearance, which seemed like an unnecessary step, necessary maybe 12 years ago or so when it was put in, but the policies and procedures of the watershed protection has changed so much that they don't need a zoning clearance from the planning department. They can act as their own lead agency for SEQA.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else from staff? I have no speaker cards. I would open the public hearing, and I would close the public hearing. Commissioners? Is there any response from staff to that tremendous public outcry? Commissioners?
I would like to move that we approve the staff recommendations on this project.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Molitor, second, Commissioner Idukas. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving to discussion. Report of the Planning Director.
Well, two things that I would like to, this is Christina Rizari's first report before you. I thought she did a very good job, very nice.
Bravo.
And I would also like to introduce, formally introduce, the new staff to the Planning Commission, Danielle Addison. Danielle's been with us for, she came while I was gone, I think she's been here for over a month now. Yes, and everybody loves her. She's doing a fabulous job, and we are so happy to have her aboard, so I want to introduce her to you. Let's see, a few things in the course of business. I wanted to give you copies of the planning staff training schedule. We have been doing a training schedule every other Wednesday at our staff meeting, and we have been bringing in representatives from all other county agencies, Fish and Game, Corps of Engineers, from some of the local Indian tribes, just to kind of explain to us their... us their, their policies and the way that they do business. And we're very interested in, in that. And so I'm not sure if you're ever in the building or would like to join in on one of our trainings. We have things coming up like Compact for Sustainable Ventura County, we had one recently on how to read a grading plan, that was very interesting, Microsoft Word training, climate change, civil administrative penalties training. So I want to pass these out and if you're, you're, you know, interested in attending, we send them to the board office too, they send some of their aides to attend that also. Let's see. On more good news, the planning department received an award of merit for our Build It Smart website from the Central Coast American Planning Association. If you haven't visited that website, it's, it's a great website that the county has done in conjunction with the cities that gives all sorts of information, tips, websites where people have built green, lead certification information. And it's a very, it's a very good compact website where you can find a lot of information on green building. And that is access to the county's website and it's called Build It Smart. We have, we still have several vacant positions in the planning department. We are doing interviews today for planner three positions and we did interviews last week for a specific position that we're hoping to get in the planning department for a biologist to make sure that all of our biology work through the initial study guidelines and through CEQA is done consistently and concisely. And it seems like after a period of time, we've kind of learned that if we had one person doing that, that would, that would be very beneficial for the, for the planning department. And so we are, we interviewed for that last week and so we're hoping to make some decisions on that. The housing element of the general plan, we received the state's comments for that and we're busily working away on those. I expect that it will come before your commission, end of May or early June. That's when we're expecting that to get here. We have a contract that we're in the process of finalizing for the expansion of the Sidney Valley landfill. So we will begin the environmental impact report on that project shortly. So that will be a year or so before it gets back here. That's the timeline for the environmental impact report. So once we do that, what's the company?
SAIC.
SAIC, SAIC out of Carpinteria. So that, that, we will begin working with them on, on that project also. We also had a report, Tom Berg did a report to the board on the eighth. It was a very good and thorough report, which we completely support. He interviewed a lot of people in the planning department who have, you know, told him our issues and what we, what we bump up against when we're trying to be efficient and effective in processing land use entitlements. And, and Tom made a wonderful report back to the board. He recommended and the board supported to receive and file the report and to convene a management committee consisting of representatives of the different agencies. And then to rather quickly report back to the board on what it is that we think that can be done to expedite the permitting process. And I, he made several major recommendations for improvement, he made 10, and we agree in support with all 10. And we surely hope a lot of those will happen, such as, you know, increased staffing at the public counter and get our pre-submitting planner back that we've lost several budget cuts ago. And setting up meetings with the other agencies, that we would meet consistently with the other agencies to discuss projects with them, I fully support that. Update all of our ordinances, you know, that's something that we always want to do and just never have the staff or the, or the money. And we always do try to get grant funds to update those. So I think in the last few years, we've really made a big effort to update our policies, our website, our forms, our brochures. I mean, we're just, we're making tremendous strides in that with still six positions down in the planning department. So we're hoping to fill those and I'm excited to, to sit on this management committee and see what it is that we can do because we recognize that there's shortfalls and we really want to address those as quickly as possible. So if you have any questions on, on that, I'd be glad to talk a little bit more about that. But that's what I had to report.
Just, any comments or questions? One, because the writer's strike is over and filming is now running rampant, I'm getting a lot of phone calls because a lot of that filming is happening in and around my end of the county. And there was a recent shoot where it was Witch Mountain and at the end of the shoot, there was a lovely explosion and a great deal of light. And many of the calls are from people who experienced the sound. And I know that the shoot ran late and so a nine o'clock or 10 o'clock explosion turned into a one o'clock explosion. And I know that, that within the division, since Dan Price left, filming doesn't, is not a, he had a passion for it. Who is handling it and is there somebody I can direct those complaints to? And it's, it's a cash cow. So is it a cash cow when it works for the planning department?
I believe that our film person, her name is Krista Blankenbiller, she does an excellent job. I have received no complaints and I'll look into this one, really for a long time on our permitting process and how quickly we get them through.
It wasn't about the permitting process?
But this, the way that our filming permit works, and Pat is the manager of that section also, I don't believe that we have any issues. We, as far as a compliance, if we have a problem with somebody violating, it would first go to Krista and then it would go to Pat. But I, I'm not aware of any, have we received any violations? I'm not aware of that particular one, but I'd be happy to look into it because they do need to follow. It is a permit, it's an entitlement that we grant them. And if, you know, if the entitlement ends at 10:00 PM, they're not allowed to obviously shoot at 1:00 in the morning.
Well, I know, but I also deal with the movie business. So, you know, you give an inch, you take a mile because it's an alternative reality. It's more if there are specific peo, folks who need to call somebody because this particular shoot happened literally right outside those city limits of Fillmore, the assumption was it was a Fillmore shoot and it was not. We had the same issue when we put the plane in, in the bridge in Piru, you know. That one, for many reasons, went late, partly because the rain machine didn't work. And, but there was a methodology for the local community to at least know who to call and be informed. And that's, that's the piece that, that I want to make sure we stay connected up with. So Pat, I'll send them your way or if I could just get emailed phone numbers, that would be very helpful. Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Kim, what is your son's name?
His name is Jaden Sterling.
With the commission's permission, I would like to adjourn in Jaden's honor today.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yeah. Next meeting, 14?